Fifth special session. Today is Friday, June 17, 2022, 1:33 PM here in Senate Chamber in Capitol Hill, Saipan. At this time, I'd like to call this session to order. I wish to ask everyone, please stand for a moment of silence. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Senator Cruz.
Here.
Senator Delion Guerrero.
Here.
Senator Hoco. Mr. President.
Gigi.
Senator King Neighbors. Senator Manglonya. Senator Kirua. Senator Sablan.
Gaya.
Senator Santos. Mr. President, eight members present, one absent.
With eight members present and one absent, we do have a quorum to conduct this session. Clerk, let the record reflect that Senator Carl King Neighbors heard my excuse from this session. Before I open the floor for going into the next order of business, I wish to recognize the presence of the nominees as well as our colleague, a longtime member of the legislature, former president Pete Regis, welcome back to the Senate. With that, under item B, under public comment, this is the portion of the session where we give opportunity to the members of the public to present a testimony or offer a public comment with respect to any of the items in today's order of business. So at this time, the floor is open for public comment. And kindly state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Senate. As you know, my name is Pete Regis, and I'm here on behalf of the Commonwealth Ports Authority as a member of the CPA Board of Directors. To begin with, I first want to thank the members of this body for considering this important bill. I'd also like to specifically commend both Senate President Jude Hofschneider and House Speaker Edmund Villagomez for their leadership in drafting and negotiating many of the bill's important aspects. Both individuals were integral to this bill's development and took the time out of their very busy schedule to jointly meet with CPA, FAA, and OPA to hammer out its key provision. To provide a brief history, as many of you know, since May of this year, CPA management has been having weekly meetings with FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration officials, in order to correct past audit findings and in order to address the OPA 1% law. During this meeting, FAA has stated that CPA's remittance of the OPA 1% pursuant to the current law, without more, would be in violation of CPA's federal grant assurances. The bill before you today addresses that issue. Its passage is important in order to clear the way for CPA to receive and continue receiving current and additional federal grant funding. As CPA has provided a multitude of past comments and testimony on this subject, and I also have a copy of the testimony submitted to the House in case the Senate members wishes to get a copy. I will spare the members an additional rehash of the issues. Should there be any need for clarification, CPA and its board are ready to provide any information as soon as possible. Once again, thank you, members, for considering this important piece of legislation and for the reason that I just stated. I hope the members of this august body will pass the bill before you today. Thank you very much.
Seisus Masi, Mr. Regis, any other member? The public that wish to offer public comments, please proceed to the chair that is provided.
Move forward to the next item, item C, reading and approval of the journal. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under item C, we do have one journal for adoption, and that is Senate Journal 22-25. First day, third special session dated May 18, 2022. Mr. President and members, I move first adoption.
There's been a motion offered by the floor leader for the adoption of Senate Journal 22-25. Do I hear a second? Second discussion? All those in favor of the motion for the adoption of Senate Journal 22-25, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Senate Journal 22-25 hereby adopted. And as mentioned earlier, the chair wishes to request the members to entertain item H, or I'm sorry, item M of our order of business. So with that, I now recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under item M, reports of standing committees, we do have two items before us. The first one is Standing Committee Report Number 22-75 from Your Committee on Executive Appointments and Government Investigations, reporting on the executive reappointment of Dr. Tiffany Lynn Willis to serve as a member of the Healthcare Professionals Licensing Board representing healthcare professionals. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
There's a motion for the adoption of Standing Committee Report Number 22-75, reporting on the executive appointment and government investigations, reporting on the appointment of Dr. Tiffany Lynn Willis to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board as a healthcare professional. Mr. President, Your Committee on Executive Appointment and Investigation, to which was referred the reappointment of Dr. Willis to serve as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board as a healthcare professional, begs leave to report as follows. After review and consideration of testimonies provided, Your Committee recommends the confirmation of Dr. Tiffany Lynn Willis' reappointment to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board. Pursuant to Rule 8, Section 5 of the Official Rules of the Senate, it is the duty and purpose of Your Committee to report to the Senate for legislative action pertaining to the appointment of Dr. Tiffany Lynn Willis to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board. Your Committee has examined all pertinent documents relating to the executive reappointment of Dr. Willis over credentials to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board. In summation of all written and oral testimonies provided to the committee, there is one written testimony in support of the appointee, one oral testimony in support of the appointee, of which hard copy of the testimony stated was submitted on the date of the hearing, and no written or oral testimony in opposition of the appointee. Additionally, Your Committee stated several recommendation issues and concerns to the appointee that are included in this report. And based on the overall assessment of Dr. Willis' credentials, experiences, testimonies, goals for the agency, and other relevant issues considered, Your Committee is convinced that Dr. Willis has the qualifications and leadership skills necessary to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board. The public hearing was conducted on June 13, 2022, at the Senate Chamber here at the Honorable Suspi Mafnas Memorial Building, Capitol Hill, Saipan. And during the hearing, certain recommendations, issues, and concerns were raised for the appointee accompanied by appointee Theodore R. Parker to address and look into when confirmed as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board. In conclusion, all required documents in conformance with Rule 8, Section 5 of the Official Rules of the Senate have been submitted to Your Committee for review and consideration. And based on the submission of pertinent documents and testimonies, Your Committee concludes that the reappointment of Dr. Tiffany Lynn Willis to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board is in accordance with 3 CMC subsection 22 of 4. Therefore, Your Committee consents to the confirmation of Dr. Tiffany Lynn Willis to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board as a healthcare professional. Mr. President, Your Committee on Executive Appointment and Investigation, to which was referred the reappointment of Dr. Willis to serve as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board as a healthcare professional, begs leave to report as follows. After review and consideration of testimonies provided, Your Committee recommends the confirmation of Dr. Tiffany Lynn Willis' reappointment to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board. Pursuant to Rule 8, Section 5 of the Official Rules of the Senate, it is the duty and purpose of Your Committee to report to the Senate for legislative action pertaining to the appointment of Dr. Tiffany Lynn Willis to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board. Your Committee has examined all pertinent documents relating to the executive reappointment of Dr. Willis over credentials to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board. In summation of all written and oral testimonies provided to the committee, there is one written testimony in support of the appointee, one oral testimony in support of the appointee, of which hard copy of the testimony stated was submitted on the date of the hearing, and no written or oral testimony in opposition of the appointee. Additionally, Your Committee stated several recommendation issues and concerns to the appointee that are included in this report. And based on the overall assessment of Dr. Willis' credentials, experiences, testimonies, goals for the agency, and other relevant issues considered, Your Committee is convinced that Dr. Willis has the qualifications and leadership skills necessary to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board. The public hearing was conducted on June 13, 2022, at the Senate Chamber here at the Honorable Suspi Mafnas Memorial Building, Capitol Hill, Saipan. And during the hearing, certain recommendations, issues, and concerns were raised for the appointee accompanied by appointee Theodore R. Parker to address and look into when confirmed as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board. In conclusion, all required documents in conformance with Rule 8, Section 5 of the Official Rules of the Senate have been submitted to Your Committee for review and consideration. And based on the submission of pertinent documents and testimonies, Your Committee concludes that the reappointment of Dr. Tiffany Lynn Willis to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board is in accordance with 3 CMC subsection 22 of 4. Therefore, Your Committee consents to the confirmation of Dr. Tiffany Lynn Willis to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board as a healthcare professional. Again, I ask the full members of the Senate to support Standing Committee Report Number 22-75. Thank you, Mr. President. Seisus Masi, Senator Cruz, any other member who would like to offer comments before I call for the vote? Okay, please note that once, if the committee report is adopted, that gives approval for the reappointment of Dr. Willis to the board. So with that, clerk, please call the roll for the adoption of Committee Report 22, Number 22-75.
Senator Cruz. Senator Delion Guerrero.
Yes.
Senator Hoco.
Yes.
Senator Manglonya. Senator Kirua. Senator Sablan.
Yes.
Senator Santos. Mr. President.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. President, all eight members voting yes.
With eight members voting yes, Standing Committee Report Number 22-75 is hereby adopted. Thank you. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last committee report on today's agenda is Standing Committee Report Number 22-76 from Your Committee on Executive Appointments and Government Investigations, reporting on the executive reappointment of Mr. Theodore R. Parker to serve as a member of the Healthcare Professionals Licensing Board representing healthcare professionals. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
There's a motion for the adoption of Standing Committee Report 22-76, reporting from the EAGI committee with appointee Theodore R. Parker to be a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board. Do I hear a second to that motion? It's been seconded, under discussion. Once again, I recognize the chairman of the committee, Senator Cruz. Thank you, Mr. President. This is the last committee report from Your Executive Appointment and Investigation. And this is Standing Committee Report Number 22-76, the executive appointment of Mr. Theodore R. Parker to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board as a healthcare professional. Mr. President, Your Committee on Executive Appointments and Government Investigations, to which was referred the appointment of Mr. Theodore R. Parker to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board as a healthcare professional, begs leave to report as follows. After review and consideration of testimonies provided, Your Committee recommends the confirmation of Mr. Parker's appointments to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board as a healthcare professional. Pursuant to Rule 8, Section 5 of the Official Rules of the Senate, it is the duty and purpose of Your Committee to report to the Senate for legislative action pertaining to the reappointment of Mr. Parker to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board as a healthcare professional. Your Committee has examined all pertinent documents relating to the executive appointment of Mr. Parker's over credentials to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board. In summation of all written and oral testimonies provided to the committee, there is one written testimony in support of the appointee, one oral testimony in support of the appointee, of which one hard copy of the testimony stated was submitted on the date of the hearing, and no written or oral testimony in opposition of the appointee. Additionally, Your Committee stated several recommendations, issues, and concerns to the appointee that are included in this report. And based on the overall assessment of Mr. Parker's credentials, experiences, testimonies, goals for the agency, and other relevant issues considered, Your Committee is convinced that Mr. Parker has the qualifications and leadership skills necessary to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board. The public hearing was conducted on June 13, 2022 here at the Senate Chamber of the Honorable Suspi Mafnas Memorial Building, Capitol Hill, Saipan. And during the hearing, certain recommendations, issues, and concerns were raised for the appointee accompanied by appointee Tiffany Willis to address and look into when confirmed as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board. In conclusion, all required documents in conformance with Rule 8, Section 5 of the Official Rules of the Senate have been submitted to Your Committee for review and consideration. And based on the submission of pertinent documents and testimonies, Your Committee concludes that the reappointment of Mr. Theodore R. Parker to continue serving as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board in accordance with 3 CMC subsection 22 of 4. Therefore, Your Committee consents to the confirmation of Mr. Theodore R. Parker to serve as a member of the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board as a healthcare professional. Again, I ask the full members of the Senate to support Standing Committee Report Number 22-76. Thank you, Mr. President. Seisus Masi, Chairman Cruz, any other member who would like to comment on the committee report? Ready? Clerk, please call the roll for the adoption of Standing Committee Report Number 22-76.
Senator Cruz. Senator Delion Guerrero.
Yes.
Senator Hoco.
Yes.
Senator Manglonya. Senator Kirua. Senator Sablan.
Yes.
Senator Santos. Mr. President.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. President, all eight members voting yes.
With eight members voting yes, Standing Committee Report Number 22-76 hereby approved. Therefore, confirming Mr. Parker back to the Healthcare Professional Licensing Board as a healthcare professional. Thank you. Ready? Short recess, five minutes. We're back into our plenary session, and as indicated earlier, the chair would like to recognize now the floor leader to offer the appropriate motion on resolution calendar for consideration of Senate Resolution 22-24. So, floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one resolution on today's resolution calendar, and that is Senate Resolution 22-24, a Senate resolution to acknowledge and honor Donald Beneventi Mendiola for his long-lasting contributions to the Commonwealth of the Northern Marana Islands. Mr. President and members, I move for its adoption.
Motion for adoption of Senate Resolution 22-24. It's been seconded, under discussion.
I'm not sure if this Senate resolution has been introduced as committee of the whole, and if not, if there's no objection by the author if this can be introduced as committee of the whole. Thank you.
No problem with that, Senator Edith. Okay, with this clerk, make that note, that is, introduce committee of the whole. So, no further. Senator Edith, would you like to offer some comments? Or we're ready to adopt? Okay, ready for adoption. All those in favor to adopt Senate Resolution Number 22-24, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Senate Resolution Number 22-24 is hereby adopted. Moving on to bill calendar. Under... I would like, I requested the floor leader to first dispose of House Bill Number... the House Bill first, so with that, or correction, dispose of Senate Bill first. Floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two legislations in front of us under our bill calendar. The first legislation is Senate Bill Number 22-51 to exempt public corporations and autonomous agencies from paying the 1% public auditor fee, as agreed upon by the author, and a House bill that is in front of us today. I move that we file Senate Bill Number 22-51.
There's a motion, so offered by the floor leader to file Senate Bill Number 22-51.
Second.
Do I hear a second? Second? Discussion? Senator Delion Guerrero.
Mr. President, thank you. I do not object to the disposal of my Senate Bill 22-51. I understand and agree that I yield it to the House for them considering it's a revenue legislation, so I have no issue for its disposal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Senator Delion Guerrero. For the requests, clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Cruz.
Yes.
Senator Delion Guerrero.
Yes.
Senator Hoco.
Yes.
Senator Manglonya. Senator Kirua.
Mm-hmm.
Senator Sablan.
Yes.
Senator Santos. Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. President, all eight members voting yes.
With eight members voting in the affirmative, Senate Bill Number 22-51 is hereby filed. Moving on, floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last legislation on today's bill calendar is House Bill Number 22-102 to exempt the Commonwealth Ports Authority from paying the 1% public auditor fee with respect to airport revenues. Mr. President and members, I move for its passage in the form of HD1.
There's been a motion, or motion on the floor for the passage of House Bill 22-102, HS1. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
It's been seconded. Discussion?
Been seconded, discussion. I recognize, uh, Senator DeLongo Guerrero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd just like to go on record, uh, on a few comments. Um, Mr. President, I took the liberty to make a call on June fifteen, twenty twenty-two um, with the independent auditor Deloitte. My call is primarily to validate if there is any revenue diversion stated in CPA's audit report. The response was for FY twenty twenty audit, there was no mention of revenue diversion. Additionally, the FAA letter dated May sixteen does not provide a definitive finding or decision by FAA that there is indeed a revenue diversion, but instead the letter reads may be considered revenue diversion. CPA's booking of the one percent expense but not paying it out is not a revenue diversion, but merely a business book entry of debiting expense and crediting payables, cash, or any other appropriate account to complete the credit entry and down the line with end-of-year adjusting book entries as well, considering the non-payout of the one percent. I have to agree with the Secretary of Finance that having the CNMI serve as a guarantor with its full faith and credit when bonds are floated, whether it is for CPA or any other independent autonomous entity, comes with a cost for doing business, and as such, we must thread carefully when putting the entire CNMI as collateral and not impose on the cost of doing business. On the IDC matter, which is indirect cost, which I reviewed the recording, I understand from the FAA representative during last week's June seventh meeting here in this chamber that IDC is an allowable expense. It would be interesting to know what is the percentage of the IDC set aside, the amount of IDC set asides, whether the IDC is a negotiated CNMI rate or the grantor rate, who keeps the IDC set asides, and if the one percent more or less can be considered as part of the IDC set asides. Lastly, Mr. President and colleagues, I find comfort that House Bill twenty-two one oh two, HS one, HD one, provides OPA the ability to bill for its services, if any, under the airport operations, while applying in its entirety the OPA one percent on seaport. Thank you, Mr. President.
Cesar Masia, Senator DeLongo Guerrero? Any other member? Ready? Senator Victor Hoco?
Yeah, just point of clarification, Mr. President, uh, in the event that, uh, House Bill number twenty-two dash one oh one in the form of HS one and HD one, uh, becomes law, uh, would this waive the prior, uh, one percent uh, OPA fee from these airport? Just for clarification on that matter.
That's a very good question. Can I, uh, request the consul to provide guidance with that?
I, I've seen that provision in other exemptions, but this provi, the, the, this bill does not include that, so that's a good question, and it seems like it's not waived.
So, eh, go ahead. So in a sense, uh, consul, the, the bill only addresses move, the, the, the one percent of, uh, non-contribution to OPAs moving forward.
Yes.
That, that, that's the way I, I would assume if there is nothing in the bill that will, uh, waive the prior, uh, charges, uh, one percent, uh, fee for OPA.
Your assumption is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Victor. Thank you, uh, consul. Nothing further. With that, I wish to call for the vote. Clerk?
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator DeLongo Guerrero?
Yes.
Senator Hoco? Senator Manglonia? Senator Kirua? Senator Sablan?
Mm-hmm.
Senator Santos? Mr. President?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. President, all eight members voting yes.
With eight members voting yes, House Bill twenty-two dash one oh two, HS one, HD one, hereby passes the Senate. Thank you. With no other items before uh, us today, I wish to, um, go to item R before we adjourn, and just, um, share with the committee or the members of the the, um, games, Pacific Mini Games that's happening, uh, I think it started last night, but the actual, uh, formal opening ceremony is this afternoon at five, which everyone, I believe, were invited. So, um, I asked that if you have time, or please make time to, uh, root for the athletes that are competing, especially the athletes from the CNMI. We hope Mother Nature cooperates. Not the last hour, but should be okay this evening. So with that, again, um, wish to, uh, welcome our visitors and root for the athletes for a, uh, uh, friendly game of, I mean, competition, but goodwill, no, amongst the nations that are participating. Um, Senator Vini?
Thank you, Mr. President, and under announcements and, uh, in line with, uh, your announcement, um, this coming Tuesday, um, June twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, um, the Saipan and Northern Island Legislative Delegation, um, has agreed to host, um, the, um, executives, um, from the the visiting, um, island countries that are, are participating in the games. Um, the gathering, um, will be hosted by the Snail, and it will be at Kensington Hotel at the outdoor back, uh, venue. Um, and it is, uh, the Gathering of the Island Celebration. Um, the invitations will be sent to, um, all of you members so that we can, um, welcome our visiting um, dignitaries and executives, um, for, for the games. So this will, this will be a hosting, um, not for the entire, um, athletes. Um, this will be a hosting for, um, the dignitaries of each, um, visiting island country and also the executives of the, um, Pacific Mini Games. So invitations will be um, forthcoming, and we have included the, um, LB staff as well to join us and, and the member staff, um, as well. So, um, thank you, Mr. President.
Cesar Masia, floor leader. So with that, uh, floor leader for, offer motion for adjourn, adjournment.
Thank you, Mr. President, and this time, for motion to adjourn today's Senate session, subject to the call of the president.
There's been a motion to adjourn, and the session seconded. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. This Senate session stands adjourned, subject to the call. Thank you very much. Have a good afternoon.